Let the meeting come to order. For the record, I am Lamar Russell. We do not have vice chair or chairperson tonight because of several reasons. Mr. Price is not well and so he's not here tonight. He is our vice chairperson. He had been serving as a chairperson in the interim until we got to where we are tonight, so we have a full board and can elect a set of officers. So I will chair the meeting until we've had the election and then at the moment the or after the officers are elected, those officers then take over immediately and then we'll finish the meeting. Is that the way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I get a yes from our attorney and from our assistant staff person. Then the first thing we do is approve the minutes of last meeting. You have before you the minutes of the last meeting and have had a chance to review them, I hope. And are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If there are none, may I hear a motion to approve as submitted?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a second by Dr. Miller and others. Let's, Patsy, call the roll.
Harry Pearson?
Here. Four, you're voting for. We're approving the minutes.
I thought you was calling the roll.
Oh, yeah, which one?
Well, okay.
Here.
You're voting for or against the minutes?
Oh, for.
There you go.
Usually they would do that with...
Melissa Bass?
For.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Nancy Genelcor?
For.
Lamar Russell?
For. Okay, those minutes are approved unanimously. Our second order of business to elect a new chairman and a vice chairperson and the floor is now open for nominations for chairperson for the coming year.
I nominate Lamar Russell for chairperson.
I am a, am I a temporary appointee, David?
No, you were, you were reappointed for a full term, so I believe you can, if you're willing, accept that unless Anthony has other thoughts, but I believe you're, you're good.
Um, okay. Well, since I'm nominated and I get a chance to make a nomination, I would ask before I nominate anybody, is anybody down here on the end, on the right side, willing to take this office? I recommend it. It's a great learning experience.
Did I get a second on my motion?
Second.
Okay. Lamar nominated second.
Are there any other nominees? All right, let's just call the roll and I hate to take this job, I really do.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Nancy Genelcor?
For.
Melissa Bass?
For.
Harry Pearson?
For.
Lamar Russell?
I will take it for. All right, that makes that guy the chairperson. Then that's the, open the floor for nominations for the vice chair. I nominate John Price since he's not here to defend himself. Okay, is there any other nominations? Don't be bashful. As I said, this is a good learning experience. What you learn is to get in there and do it and you don't get hung, you get rewarded. You only get patted on the back for doing the work. New nominations for vice chair, come on. All right, I nominated John, is there a second? Has somebody seconded already?
No, nobody's seconding it yet.
Then the nomination dies for lack of second. Is there another nomination?
I'll second that one, sorry. I didn't want to be on record for seconding someone who wasn't here, but I'll do it.
Hey, if you, you gotta be here. I think John will be a good sport about it. He likes to do this work. I think it would have been better for him to be there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Patsy, call the roll, please.
Harry Pearson?
Yes.
Melissa Bass?
For.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Nancy Genelcor?
For.
Lamar Russell?
For. Okay, so we got two people who will serve as the chairman and the vice chair for the coming year. I was just grumbling about being reluctant to take this job because I did it a long time and I don't need to do it anymore. Other people need to. So here's what, here's the deal, gang. Watch me and do the good things I do and do, and don't do the undesirable things that I do and then you will have a good learning experience to take these jobs when your time comes. All right, our next order of business is to interview, interview a board applicant. I've got a Nancy, am I looking at the wrong thing? I'm looking at, I am looking at a sheet of paper that says minutes of December the 4th.
Should be after the minutes.
Let me get down here to the agenda. We're going to interview Stephen Wayne and last name. Would you come to the mic, please? Stephen Wayne Stroud. Just open to the floor to the left. Harry, would you like to ask any questions from Stephen?
Mr. Chairman, can we have our city attorney kind of swear the applicant in or ask him some questions first?
Yeah. Yeah, we just have one formality question, Mr. Stroud. All the information in your application true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, it is true.
Okay, now on your application, you list the planning and zoning board as your, as your only choice and ranked number one. Please explain to the planning and zoning board why you would like to serve on the planning and zoning board and what you can bring to the board.
Last couple of years of my working career have been involved in, in site development and I feel like a lot of the things that the planning and zoning board does involves those types of skill sets, understanding municipalities, utilities, understanding how processes of government work. Now look at this as an opportunity for me to become a participant in the town that I've lived in for some 15 years now.
So you said you're into, you're part of your job is site development. Do you anticipate having any conflicts of interest with the city?
None whatsoever. Most of our work is in the Orlando area and portions of south to it. I do not look to us doing any work in Brevard County. We got enough.
Thank you for rescuing me, Anthony. I am rusty. Okay, now we'll answer, open the board to ask their own questions. Harry, would you have any questions for Mr. Stroud?
Not really. I have, I always notice the boards that people show interest and you have indicated only the planning and zoning and that's great. That means you're not getting spread out there. You've got a very good background for the sort of thing we, we need, so that's all I have.
Okay, Melissa, do you have any questions?
I was gonna ask, what brought you, what kind of picture just to apply for the board here?
I had a friend of mine suggest it might be something that my skill sets I currently have would be worthwhile applying to and, you know, actually I've done some research. I've spent some time looking at past videos. I've probably got about eight to 12 hours of study. I actually know things that, you know, had I not even considered this, I know things are going on around here. For instance, forced man replacements on, from LS7 over here, situations where the guys were getting ready to try to set up that go-kart outfit. I've read up on that. I've read up on the minutes of things that were going on with, with the right-of-way and Ocean Woods and stuff, so I've done, I've done my research on it and it looked like something that might be a good fit for me. It took me a while to make the decision to do it, but anyway.
Okay, well, I appreciate you giving a little background.
Trying to apply myself.
Dr. Miller, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
And Nancy, do you have any questions?
Well, I don't have any either. I think your, your skill set, your background are adequately explained and I think you just, the way you do this job is you just come into it and start doing it and you learn a lot and you have a lot of enjoyment and satisfaction for having done it, so I, and I welcome you aboard also. What's our next move? Recommend the gentleman for approval to the council. May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. We have on the floor a motion to recommend this gentleman for approval to the city council. Patsy, would you call the roll, please?
Nancy Genelcor?
For.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Melissa Bass?
For.
Harry Pearson?
For.
Lamar Russell?
For. Right, we'll go right into the agenda or the business for tonight. Let me get, where's the... I came to this meeting fat, dumb and happy thinking I'm just gonna sit here and let John Price lead us through it and I'll add to the confusion, but it looks like I've got to quarterback it, so I can't find my paperwork. Let's see, next item on the agenda. There is an agenda sheet buried in all this stack somewhere. Next time I'll have it all stacked in the way I'm gonna use it. At any rate...
Mr. Chairman?
Let's go into the future need and use of undeveloped portion of Ridgewood Avenue extension. We'll ask David Dickey to lead us through the staff report.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll certainly start us out, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to quickly defer to the city attorney and/or Mr. Morley. They've been intimately involved in this. There's a lot of, if you've had a chance to go through the agenda packet, there's a lot of history here, to say the least, and, you know, I know items such as this have generally have not come to this, this board in the past. However, our interim city manager, who's sitting right behind us, has asked that we, we go the extra mile in getting more public involvement and more public input into items like this. So for this reason, we originally brought this item to this particular board on, I think it was the 4th of December, early December. And at that time, there was a, there was some discussion on the item and that meeting ended really that the board requested staff to go and prepare some specific recommendations, some specific policy that the board could consider and, and that's what's been done. When we get to the end of the agenda or the end of the discussion this evening, there will be some specific, I think there's three specific policy recommendations that staff is making. And so what we would, we staff would like to do is we'll make the presentation and we'd like the board to consider the, the three policy recommendations and depending on the will of the board, make a recommendation regarding those policy statements which, which would ultimately be forwarded to the city council for their, their consideration. So given all that, I'm going to turn this over and to our city attorney and Anthony is, is certainly much more equipped to, to provide a lot more of the details than, than I, so Anthony, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be brief, but I think first, David, I think it would be important that you put up the map that staff has prepared regarding the subject area. The picture is worth probably a million words in this particular situation. This item is somewhat different than previous items that, or other items that the board considers. In this particular case, because of the history, as Dave indicated, and the information that was disseminated in the community and misunderstandings regarding some of the easements and city's ownership of certain lands out there, the city council's tasked the, the planning and zoning board to come, come up in essence with a policy statement recommendation regarding the Ridgewood Avenue extension. And we've had public input on this, the board has, on, on two occasions and the, after that public meeting, we went back, looked at the, looked at the record and put together a draft policy statement for the planning and zoning board to consider. We're requesting that the, the planning and zoning board consider the policy, written policy statement, provide any comments, make any recommended changes and vote to move this on to the city council as a recommendation. And as Dave indicated, based on the information that we received and our research, the recommendation regarding Ridgewood Avenue extent, right, Ridgewood Avenue extension consists of three parts. The first is that the city should maintain fee simple ownership of the Ridgewood Avenue extension property. If you look at the map, we've identified the Ridgewood Avenue extension property as the property that is depicted in green. So that's, that's the property in question. A substantial portion of that property is currently paved and is being used as right-of-way. However, there's an unpaved portion of the Ridgewood Avenue extension. It's reflected by that white dot more or less in the middle of the green line. You'll see in the legend, unpaved portion of the Ridgewood Avenue extension. That unpaved portion goes from that dot in essence to the southern boundary of Harbor Heights. So the first recommendation would be to maintain ownership of that, of that property. Why? You heard testimony from members of the public that, you know, that area could be important and if Ocean Woods took action to discontinue the public's use of, of their private trail, which is depicted, as you can see, in, in more or less pink, then members of the public would no longer have the ability to traverse freely between Harbor Heights and the area south. The reason why that is, maintaining ownership is important is because if, if Ocean Woods were to discontinue the public's use of their private area, there would be no other place for the public to, to traverse. And you will note on the, on the, on the picture, you know, there are numerous destination points to the south of the Ridgewood Avenue extension. We've identified some of them. Most importantly is Cape View Elementary School and we heard testimony that students do use the Ocean Woods private path to go to and from school. And if that path was not available, the only public access point would be for students to go out onto North Atlantic and then make their way back to the, to Cape View Elementary or alternatively actually have to go onto the beach, which has public access, and walk the beach to about Cherry Down Park and then go to Cape View. So as, as at least having as a, as a backup plan, that Ridgewood Avenue extension could be very important in the future for, for pedestrian access and bicycle access for that matter. And the city may in the future have to or consider putting a formal pathway into that unpaved portion of Ridgewood Avenue extension. Why is that important? In paragraph 15 of the proposed position statement, we cited several comprehensive plan policies that the city has in place regarding the importance of pedestrian and bicycle access. As you know, this board serves as not only the planning and zoning board, but the land planning agency and this board has responsibility for reviewing consistency, development of issues consistent, whether or not they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we felt that those, those policies were, were important factors in this recommendation. The other recommendation, number two, is that the city should continue to maintain the Ridgewood Avenue extension as green space. As I indicated, a portion of the Ridgewood Avenue extension is currently green space and the recommendation is that that portion be maintained as green space. Lastly, to kind of tie in the central issue and relevant to the recommendation, number three says that in the event Ocean Woods constructs improvements on, on its private property, which have the effect of closing the existing private dirt path to the general public in the future, the city should consider designing and constructing a public pedestrian path through Ridgewood Avenue extension for purposes of maintaining the connectivity currently enjoyed by the public between Harbor Heights and the paved portion of Ridgewood That's generally the recommendation and the comprehensive plan policy foundation under which this recommendation is, is being recommended to you.
Any other comments, David?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any. Todd, anything you could add? No, no, Mr. Chairman, I think we can, we'll turn it over to the board at this time.
Okay. You know, we had a, we had two hearings. We had a very good neighborhood discussion about all this with a room full of people from Ocean Woods, Harbor Heights and Ocean Oaks. And a lot of good ideas were floated back and forth and the, and the staff heard that, the board heard it. So the policy that we're recommending tonight to the council for approval is a distillation of all those ideas and that discussion. While I'm talking, I'll just go ahead and say, and I'll open the floor for questions from the other members. I live in Harbor Heights. The, the world I hear is everybody's satisfied with the way it turned out. They're calm and happy that we, we had a chance to talk about it and everybody had a chance to express their opinion. And what we've got here tonight is, is the end result. And what I hear is the folks are content with that, but that's just what I hear. I don't have any input from Ocean Woods and maybe Harry can give us a little more insight nor Ocean Oaks. I don't have any insight from them too, so. Having said that, I'll just turn it over to the board for open questions and, and discussion. Harry, would you like to say anything further about it?
Item three. This was been, has been discussed before. And it's saying they're implying, I suppose, that Ocean Woods has private property which is part of the section of Ridgewood that we're considering here.
No, it does not have private property.
I don't really see that.
It does not have private property on the Ridgewood extension. It has private property paralleling mainly the walking path.
If you look at the map, it's the area in pink.
Well, we're not getting into the path per se. To the beach.
Then there is no private property on the, in the green area. It belongs to the city.
Oh, okay. Stay with the green area, then.
To help you out, the only private property is the purple, that pathway and it's on Ocean Woods property.
Yeah. Mr. Pearson, we're just, really what we're asking for the board to do this evening is to make a recommendation related to that green area, which is the city, the public right-of-way.
No.
All right. Melissa?
I'm good.
Dr. Miller? I have, I have a question. You could tell from the meeting last time that this was a very passionate topic with the, with the residents. These three recommendations, were these published so that those people had an idea of what was going to be presented here tonight?
Yeah, I forward this to the contacts that I had been working with, with both Ocean Oaks, Ocean Woods and Harbor Heights and they're very satisfied with these. I invited them to come to the meeting tonight and I'll admit that email came out earlier today, but there's nobody here, but this is consistent with what they wanted anyways and as Anthony said, or as, I'm sorry, as Lamar said, this kind of congeals all the thoughts that were put together that night and I think there was even a round of applause about that night.
Yes, and I agree with you, Mr. Morley. I just wanted to make sure that they had seen this in writing and that we weren't voting on something that they had not seen. It appears to me that this is what they wanted, but I just wanted to make sure that they...
Yeah, and also, and that's a great point, this is also a recommendation to city council, so this will have yet one more public hearing and I will make sure, I give plenty of notice to everybody weeks ahead of time that this is coming and the language is unchanged, you have an opportunity to, to be at the city council meeting and, and see it actually happen officially.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Miller, do you yield the floor where you threw your questions? I'll come back to you, Nancy. David?
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback on what Todd was just talking about, just for Dr. Miller's sake. We, the, the planning and zoning board agendas in their entirety are, can be found on the city webpage, so they are available for anybody who's interested in, in looking at it and they're generally published, they're put on the city website about a week before the meeting, so there's plenty of time for people to, to look at it and digest it and if there's any questions. And we also, we have a great community engagement department here at the city and they put all this information out on the city Facebook page. We have an Instagram account, so we, we do a really good job, but I'm not aware of any comments from any, any, any of the public. I have, nobody's called me about it, so typically that means that everybody's generally happy.
Yes.
Or as happy as they can be.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, Nancy?
I'm, I'm a resident of Ocean Woods and I can tell you that the sense there is that this is fine.
Good. Well, that's, that's a good input. And my experience has been that once we have the hearing and everybody gets a chance to talk, which they did in that, in a couple of big meetings we've had, and they've had a chance to input to the council, and then when you have the wind-up to clean it all up and present it to the council, if you don't have any attendance, that's a very good indication that, hey, they've been here, they've done that, we, we pounded it flat and they don't need to spend any more time at it. So that's my reading of the situation. So having said that, all we need to do to act then is to recommend to the council the, the recommendations that the... the recommendations at the end of the recommendation sheets. One, city maintain fee simple ownership of the extension property, and that's important. That means that we own it, nobody else does, and there are all kinds of rumors around the town that they didn't own it and they had already given it away, which was completely false. That's been pounded flat, city owns it, and the city's gonna retain it and maintain it. That's policy two. And three, in the event that we need to do anything with that property, it's ours to work with. So, there you have it. I'll just ask the board then for a recommendation of this, these policies to the council.
We were asking that the board, Mr. Chairman, we're just asking that the board approve the findings and policy recommendation regarding the future use of Ridgewood Avenue Extension property as presented.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
移到
A second. Thank you. Then, Patsy, would you call the roll?
Nancy Genelcor?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Melissa Bass?
Four.
Harry Pearson?
Four.
Lamar Russell?
Four.
Okay, so we've approved the findings and the recommendation. Do we need to do anything else?
On this item, no.
All right. All right, that brings us to the remainder of the agenda. Reports an open discussion. Harry, do you have anything you wanna bring forward?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Neither do I. Melissa?
None.
Dr. Miller?
None.
Nancy?
I think I'll wait till my second meeting.
It's okay. Wait in, put your toes in, wait in up to your knees, and then you'll have more to say later. And Stephen, welcome. We're gonna look forward to working with you too.
Appreciate it.
Dave?
Is there any other business that we need to talk about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
March 18th?
Yes, that's exactly what I was gonna bring up. We are shooting for March 18th for our next board meeting. I hope that's convenient for everybody. It'll be the same time, and we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some really interesting items coming before the board.
What?
Some good...
You didn't have to say that, but now that you said it, we wanna know.
There's gonna be some policy items we'll be talking about. There'll be some, I'll call them housekeeping items, we're gonna have to get a, we're gonna have to approve a plat for City Hall.
Wow.
So, when this particular building was built, there was multiple parcels underneath it, and we're going to be, we're gonna be basically tying them all together and making, and putting a bow on it, something we should have done a while ago, so we'll be doing that. If the board remembers, a month or two ago, we had a discussion about parking spaces, and we're gonna bring, we've made some specific policy recommendations, so we bring that item back to the board. And there is a, an item, well, I think that's, I don't wanna let all the surprises out of them, but you may not come back, but...
That is during spring break, so I don't expect to be in town on that day.
Okay, thank you.
Are you still actively teaching?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought so.
I was retired for two years and failed retirement, and now I'm back to work.
Right, I understand.
Got fired from retirement.
Yeah, Lamar and I, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think the other item that I'm hoping to bring to the board at that evening is the, this non-conforming commercial zoning issue that we've been dealing with for a while now. So, we're gonna, we're gonna bring an ordinance to the board, and just as a kind of a quick primer for some of the board members that are fairly new, the city has roughly 700 parcels that are zoned commercial that are developed in a residential manner, which means they have a house on them. Primarily, they're on, they're in the North Atlantic corridor, a block, most of them are on the east, a block to the east of North Atlantic Avenue, going all the way up the city, starting from the southern boundary, going up at the Cumberland Farms and continuing up North Atlantic. And the problem that's arising is a lot of these homes are considered non-conforming, which mean, because the city code says you can't have residential on a commercial zoned property. And the challenge is that these folks, when they're either selling a piece of property or they're refinancing, the appraisals are getting dinged because they're considered non-conforming, and technically, if they were to be destroyed, they couldn't be rebuilt, and that causes a problem with an appraisal. So, we are in the process of fixing this issue. It's been years, it's, well, it's been growing for a little while, and so, we're gonna, we're gonna finally address it.
Yeah, we told the community a few meetings ago that, you know, there was lots of concern about that.
Yes.
And we promised them that we'd come back. It's our city, it's our property, and we're gonna fix it.
Yeah, but it's a why, it's a big issue.
So, it's time.
It is time. It is time. So, we'll be bringing that item, I'm hoping, to the next, to the March meeting. And that, so that may be, that's gonna be a healthy discussion.
Well, with those three items, that's enough. I wouldn't put any more into the next meeting.
Yeah, the parking issue could be a good conversation as well.
That'll get us all stirred up, because that's always a sore spot.
Yes.
Never enough room for cars.
Yes. So...
Okay.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anything else? May I have a motion to adjourn?
移到
So moved. Second.
I'll say.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.